So I'm calling the meeting to order. Could everybody please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the one nation, under God, with which I stand in the highest standing. Thank you. Secretary Bartlet, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Chair Currie. Trustee Crawford. Trustee Dooley.
Here.
Trustee Gerberki.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchner.
Yes.
Trustee Chair Currie.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
So I'm calling the meeting to order. Could everybody please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the one nation, under God, with which I stand in the highest standing. Thank you.
Secretary Bartlet, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Chair Currie. Trustee Crawford. Trustee Dooley.
Here.
Trustee Gerberki.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchner.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Here.
Trustee Bartlet is here. Student Representative Carl Power.
Here.
And student representative Suleyman is here.
Okay. Next up is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or modifications? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, and trustee Stewart will second. Okay. Trustee Bartlet, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Gerberki.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchner.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Now we're ready for your presentation.
Is this thing on? Okay. All right, let me get the annual report up. Okay. So good evening, Library Board trustees. My name is Dana Britannic. I'm the Communications Coordinator at the Novi Public Library. Thank you so much for having me here today to present the annual report for the 21-22 fiscal year. I typically start these presentations with statistics and then I go into like the accomplishments and milestones and things of the library, but I think I want to start with those ones first. So the past fiscal year was a year of getting back into the groove of our regular library services after COVID, as well as introducing some new and exciting services. At the beginning of the year, we were still doing mostly remote programming. We were so thankful for Zoom and Facebook as we heavily utilized those services to connect with our community virtually and provide a large number of educational, entertaining, and interesting programs for all ages. In September 2021, we started to dip our toes into more in-person programming or hybrid options. We were thrilled to reopen Teen Space in October of 2021 so our teen community could have a place to come and hang out, socialize, and everything after school. Definitely miss them being in the building and in that room. We officially welcomed back in-person programming at a National Library Week concert in April called Connect With Your Library Spring Concert. Our whole meeting room hadn't been filled to that capacity since before COVID. From there, it was full steam ahead for us. During this time, we introduced a brand-new email marketing system called Patron Point that allows us to reach all of our cardholders. We also planned special outreach events at local senior facilities to bring entertainment to seniors who hadn't been able to enjoy our music performances in quite a long time. These programs were sponsored by The Friends. We also engaged with residents near Lake Shore Park with polar prizes at Lake Shore Lending Library. You can see Eva, she's our Support Services Supervisor down there in the corner with our mascot Polly the Polar Bear. It was fun to create. He hung out in my office for a long time. We also hosted the 12th Annual Community Read with Angeline Booley. She's the author of Firekeeper's Daughter, which had amazing attendance both in-person and virtually. These are just a few of the many accomplishments of last fiscal year. Library usage was up 41% from the previous year, which makes sense because we were closed for a number of months due to COVID, but we're seeing those numbers increase more and more as the community comes in on a daily basis. Teen Space visits were at a little over 900, almost 1,000. It's almost there. We also reopened Meeting in Rentals in October 2021 and welcomed 204 groups, organizations, businesses to come in and use our meeting room facilities. Lake Shore Lending Library saw more usage and NPL at your door had 154 items mailed, which I'll talk about that later. So keep that on your mind. And here you can see the number of checkouts. Both physical and digital were over 884,000. We also issued almost 4,000 new library cards in that fiscal year. We've added summer reading stats to the annual report this year. Last year's theme was Oceans of Possibilities, and we saw an 8% increase in the number of books that were read. We're hoping next year, or this coming year, will be even higher. And you can see the picture of Lieutenant Amanda Kulikowski. She came by to grab her brochure and check out our summer reading library display in our lobby there. So huge thank you to all in the community who participated last year in summer reading and of course, library staff for all the planning that they did and the work that was involved in running a smooth program and of course, running the building during this incredibly busy time of year for us. The Friends of the Novi Library are dedicated and steadfast library champions, gave over 26,000 to program services and technology for the library. They're so amazing, we love them. As part of their annual contribution, Community Financial also gave their $10,000 to sponsor Lake Shore Lending Library again.
So I'm calling the meeting to order. Could everybody please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Secretary Bartlet, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Chair Curry.
President.
Trustee Crawford, Nancy Excuse, Trustee Dooley.
Here.
Trustee Graham Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchner.
Yes.
Trustee Stirring.
Here.
Trustee Bartlett is here. Student Representative Carl Power.
Here.
And student representative, Cindy is here.
Okay. Next up is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or modifications? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to the, motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, and trustee Stirring will second. Okay. Trustee Bartlet, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Graham Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchner.
Yes.
Trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett, both yes, trustee Chair Curry.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. And then we have the consent agenda. Do we have any modifications or questions on it for today? Nope, seeing none. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Follow.
Trustee Stirring was the, okay, and then a second. Okay, second from trustee Gurumuthi. Okay, great. And then now is our special wonderful presentation, right? Oh, we do. Oh, I'm sorry. I already screwed up at the beginning of the meeting. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Graham Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchner.
Yes.
Trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett, both yes, trustee Chair Curry.
Yes.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, thank you. Now we're ready for your presentation.
Is this thing on? Okay. All right, let me get the annual report up. So, good evening, Library Board trustees. My name is Dana Britannic. I'm the Communications Coordinator at the Novi Public Library. Thank you so much for having me here today to present the annual report for the 2122 fiscal year. I typically start these presentations with statistics and then I go into like the accomplishments and milestones and things of the library, but I think, I think, I think I want to start with those ones first. So the past fiscal year was a year of getting back into the groove of our regular library services after COVID, as well as introducing some new and exciting services. At the beginning of the year, we were still doing mostly remote programming. We were so thankful for Zoom and Facebook as we heavily utilized those services to connect with our community virtually and provide a large number of educational, entertaining, and interesting programs for all ages. In September 2021, we started to dip our toes into more in-person programming or hybrid options. We were thrilled to reopen Teen Space in October of 2021, so our teen community could have a place to come and hang out, socialize, and everything after school. Definitely miss them being in the building and in that room. We officially welcomed back in-person programming at a National Library Week concert in April called Connect With Your Library Spring Concert. Our whole meeting room hadn't been filled to that capacity since before COVID. From there, it was full steam ahead for us. During this time, we introduced a brand-new email marketing system called Patron Point that allows us to reach our, all of our cardholders. We also planned special outreach events at local senior facilities to bring entertainment to seniors who hadn't been able to enjoy our music performances in quite a long time. These programs were sponsored by The Friends. We also engaged with residents near Lake Shore Park with polar prizes at Lake Shore Lending Library. You can see Eva, she's our Support Services Supervisor down there in the corner with our mascot Polly the Polar Bear. It was fun to create. He hung out in my office for a long time. We also hosted the 12th Annual Community Read with Angeline Booley. She's the author of Firekeeper's Daughter, which had amazing attendance both in-person and virtually. These are just a few of the many accomplishments of last fiscal year. Library usage was up 41% from the previous year, which makes sense because we were closed for a number of months due to COVID, but we're seeing those numbers increase more and more as the community comes in on a daily basis. Teen Space visits were at a little over 900, almost 1,000. It's almost there. We also reopened Meeting in Rentals in October 2021 and welcomed 204 groups, organizations, businesses to come in and use our, our meeting room facilities. Lake Shore Lending Library saw more usage and NPL at Your Door had 154 items mailed, which I'll talk about that later. So keep that on your mind. And here you can see the number of checkouts. Both physical and digital were over 884,000. We also issued almost 4,000 new library cards in that fiscal year. We've added summer reading stats to the annual report this year. Last year's theme was Oceans of Possibilities, and we saw an 8% increase in the number of books that were read. So we're hoping next year, or this coming year, will be even higher. And you can see the picture of Lieutenant Amanda Kulikowski. She came by to grab her brochure and check out our library, our summer reading library display in our, in our lobby there. So huge thank you to all in the community who participated last year in summer reading and of course, library staff for all the planning that they did and the work that was involved in running a smooth program and of course, running the building during this incredibly busy time of year for us. The Friends of the Novi Library are dedicated and steadfast library champions, gave over 26,000 to program services and technology for the library. They're so amazing, we love them. As part of their annual contribution, Community Financial also gave their 10,000 to sponsor Lake Shore Lending Library again. Our annual report this year also features a new section to highlight the library's effort in advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion in everything that we do. Last fiscal year, 25% of the total collections budget was dedicated to DEI materials. Original goal was 15%, but ended up being 10% more than anticipated. Data from a sample survey showed that picture books were the most popular book checked out. 22% of total programming budget was dedicated to DEI programming as well. Additionally, our HR specialist Nicole began a new DEI staff training program that saw our staff completing 280 DEI training sessions. Here are some DEI highlights as well. The Library Board approved holiday closure for Juneteenth on December of last year, or in December of last year, and we held our first annual Juneteenth celebration on June 18th of this year. The Board also approved the continuation of the fine free policy through June 2023 and in, in April of this year. On March 28th, 2022, we excitedly began providing materials by mail in a service called NPL at Your Door, which I talked about earlier, and that is sponsored by The Friends as well. This has improved library accessibility to all. If a library guest is unable to make it to the library due to illness, accessibility reasons, or any other reason, honestly, we can mail them materials right to their house. So we're excited to see how it's going to run kind of this winter season. Like I said, it started in March, so we haven't had a full year of it quite just yet. We also partnered with DANE, Dear Asian Youth Novi, and a number of programs in May 2022. They attended a board meeting soon after, and I hope you recall how amazing and inspirational they all were. Staff completed a collection audit throughout the year in addition to calling attention to diverse materials with monthly book displays throughout the whole library to highlight the many voices that make up our community. We're thrilled to be continuing our DEI journey this year with more staff training opportunities, more diverse programming and displays, additional partnerships in the community, in organizations, and so much more. Here's the, the total revenue expenditures of last fiscal year. I'm not even going to attempt to try and say the numbers because I always mess up. So I will just let you look at them. And lastly, looking forward into our current fiscal year. So we've embarked on a strategic planning process to outline the next five years of library service. We're already, we already began that process and we, we'll have more information on that very soon. We've always wanted to remove the barrier and access of getting a library card as well. So Patron Point has been wonderful and has allowed us to accept online library card applications to Novi residents in addition to easily renewing library cards as well. So now guests just get an email that says, hey, it's time to renew your card, and you can just click, it'll verify you still live at Novi, and then you're good to go. Staff will be continuing their education with more DEI staff training throughout the year and will also be applying for CUSAC, the Quality Services Audit Checklist Accreditation. Instead of one community read, we're going to be doing two. So we already held one. That was in partnership with the Novi Community School District, the Novi Educational Foundation, the National Edu, or did I say that? The Novi Educational Foundation, the Neighborhood Library Association, and Hotel Baronette. We hosted Dr. Devora Heitner. She's the author of Screenwise: Helping Kids Thrive and Survive in Their Digital World. And we presented this, it was last month, right, Julie and October? And so we're currently planning the spring one, which we're hoping to have during National Library Week. This past year was incredible. Our focus was less on COVID and more on getting program, services, and materials, and so much more to the community. However, it was not without its challenges. Our staff worked tirelessly during staff shortages to make sure that library services ran at the best capacity possible for library guests and always with a smile on their face. A huge thank you to them for their incredible dedication to the community and for what they did, what they did, and what they currently still do on a daily basis. I know Julie will echo when I say that NPL has the best staff in the world. You can see them, some of them up there. Also, of course, I want to thank the Novi community for your continued support every time you walk through our doors, you check out materials from home, you attend a program, you come in and just study, you visit the café or book nook, and go on and on and on about the things you can do at the library. So thank you for everything. We are honored to serve you. Thank you so much for having me, and I will see you next year.
Thank you, Dana. I'm opening up the floor to the trustees if you have any questions or comments for Dana.
Dana, I just want to, thank you. Dana, I just want to say this is amazing. I, I think last year there was a goal to kind of like trim the takeaway portion of the annual report. And I think you had the same mindset this year, but I feel like this year, I like the trifold model better. And I think you packed so much good information in here, but it looks clean, it looks neat, and it's representative of Novi, right? It's encouraging though. It's kind of like when you get a report card. Y'all remember those days? You get a report card and you want to show everybody. I feel like this is our report card, I want to show everybody. So amazing job. Not only to you, but to marketing as well.
Oh yeah, thank you for all the input too from the marketing committee as well.
It's really all Dana, but thank you. She makes us look good, thank you. Any other trustees have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, being part of the marketing committee too, it was, I think it's very, very hard to, you know, put everything that you have been doing as a team into this just, you know, the trifle. So I went through the hardship with all of you and, you know, you've done a very, I mean, you've done justice to point out exactly what needs to be there. It's a wonderful job on this.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, on behalf of events marketing and fundraising, since I'm the chair, the chair, but I just wanted to say that if you could extend your thank yous to the rest of the team, because Dana expressed how hard everybody worked for programming and everything else to curate the images throughout the whole year. That was one of the things that we kind of talked about together was how to create that bank of images to really represent how active our library is and then also how, you know, wonderful the tapestry of our community is, and they did an outstanding job, and this looks awesome.
Yeah, it's hard for me to be at every program all the time, so this year they have been wonderful. I have a huge file with just almost every single big program or even little programs too that are storytimes, you know, that our staff have been taking photos of the kids and, and participants. It's great. See you next year.
Trustee Stirring. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for your wonderful report. I mean, it's very impressive and appreciate all your efforts and the team for doing this. And I'm just going to make one comment because I, I think when you report the usage, you're giving a very conservative number at 252,000 for the year because that doesn't include the drive-ins or the drive-ups. And so if you add the drive-ups to that, that's like another 95,000 participants that without the drive-up would have gone in or out of the library. So it's great to see that the attendance is like, you know, about 1,100 a day. I think that's, that, that's a great number. I don't exactly remember what it was pre-COVID, but that's pretty close to what it was pre-COVID if I recall correctly.
Actually, we were higher. We were at about 1,500 prior to COVID. So we're hoping to get back there. Yep. And we are now including the drive-up numbers. We've started collecting that as well. So that is a good number for you to be aware of in terms of usage.
I see it, I see it in, in your report, Julie, that they have the drive-up separately. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And just for all of you to know, Dana and I are on the calendar to meet with City Council on Monday, December 5th in order to present the annual report. Dana, since you did a great job, I'm going to ask that you bring your slides. I think it'll be very visual for City Council to do that. And also Dana did get a promotion and she's Communications Manager.
Yay! Thank you.
I think it's important for us to know her title and the right.
Really quick.
Well deserved.
Well deserved. Really quick before you present to council, can you double-check the staff training number in here versus what the PowerPoint is? Can you like make sure it's?
Okay, just double-check.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
We use you as our finalize, so that's why. After this, it'll go to print, we hope we're not reprinting. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Dana.
Okay, now we're going to move on to public comment. In order to hear all citizen comments at a reasonable hour, the Library Board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-answer session, however, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the Library Board. Citizens must state their first/last name and address. Does anyone want to give public comment today? We have somebody?
Good evening. My name is David Landry. I live at 45471 Kimberly Court, and I want to tell you how excited I am about the 100 Greatest Rock and Roll Album Program. That is outstanding. I think that is unique. It is going to bring people into the library. It's going to have people partnership with the idea with the turntables, the rock and roll albums. I am so happy that I have been asked to be part of this. In any way that I can assist, I will be happy to do so, and I just want you to know that I think this is the out-of-the-box thinking that is exactly what makes the Novi Public Library different. So thank you so much and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any public comment today? Nope, seeing none. We'll move on to our student representative report.
Good evening. I'll begin our October 2022 Library Report, and I'll start out with the tween and teen library programs. The Spooky Sweets Halloween Cupcake Decorating Program was held on October 4th, and tweens in grades four through 12 decorated and enjoyed delicious cupcakes. There were 50 people in attendance. The Spooky Halloween Magic with Baffling Bill Program was held on October 19th at Lake Shore Park and was sponsored by The Friends of the Novi Public Library. Families with children in grades K through eight enjoyed an evening of not-too-spooky tricks and laughs during this fun, interactive magic show. There were 84 people in attendance. The Tail Wagging Reading Buddies Program was held on October 26th. Youth and tweens in K, in grades K through eight had an opportunity in a comfortable, nonjudgmental space for a child and their family if they desire to read the therapy dog to encourage the child's reading skills, confidence, and love for reading. There were 10 people who attended. Now move on to the Teen Space update. During October 2022, 497 guests visited Teen Space, and there was no Teen Space connected on October 10th. Now move on to the Teen Advisory Board update. The TAB meeting was held on October 28th, and the meeting started with a welcome and an icebreaker to help to get to know each other. Teens decorated some name cards to be placed at, at their seats to help learn guest names. The TAB president led the meeting, and with a larger group of students than the previous meeting, the TAB officers opened up the discussion about what they would like to do for featured TAB meetings and shared ideas for the future community service projects. Feedback about, about how to improve next year's teen summer reading program was discussed, and finally, the meeting ended with the update about the Teen Stop Renovations Project and shared ideas for a new name about the space. There were 40 people who attended. Now some upcoming programs for December. STEM Edible Gingerbread House Engineering will be on December 6th. Tail Wagging Reading Buddies will be on December 7th, and the Teen Advisory Board will be on October, December 9th. And then the Teen Stop Featured Display for October Recognized National Hispanic Heritage Month, and there's a picture below of some of the books featured. Thank you.
Thank you. It really seems like the attendance is starting to get better, so that's really good news. I'm opening the floor up to the trustees if you have any comments or questions. Yes, trustee Chair Curry.
I just want to express appreciation. I'm glad to see that like this October's teen display wasn't the same as last October. I like the idea that we're mixing it up. You know, our teenagers are going to be teenagers with us for at least six, eight years of their life.
We try to have a featured, a different featured display every month. Absolutely.
Xeroxing last year's.
Every year.
Like what I liked is that this October, last October, we're different.
Right, oh, exactly.
And so the kids are seeing something different when we're here. You know, that's why.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yes, trustee Mitchner.
It's amazing that you remember last years because I have to tell you, I don't remember what last year's was.
Yeah, I would pay attention to when the kids going back to school.
Okay.
It's like I, I know how I was, right?
Yeah. Oh, that's impressive.
The library was about air conditioning, so I was a big fan of the summer. And then I would disagree to be a great school library where I went, but then.
That's impressive.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming here.
Great job.
Okay. Now we're moving on to the President's Report, which our President, trustee Crawford, she's on vacation right now, which is awesome. And because of that, I'm, you know, obviously chairing the meeting as your Vice President. So I do have like something that I wanted to kind of bring up and talk about under the President's Report if you would oblige me. And then Kathy's way more organized too, but I did type this out. She's awesome every meeting. As Vice President of the Novi Library Board and Acting Chair of our Board Meeting this month, I wanted to take some time during the President's Report to thank my colleagues for the robust and civil discourse at our last Library Board Meeting. It got me really thinking about our roles as a governing body and legal face of the library and how all of us work together as a whole, and I really appreciated last meeting. So I wanted to thank everybody for that because, you know, we all come to the table with different talents and knowledge, which is what makes, I think, this board work the way that it does. And it's brilliant because diversity will always be integral to innovation. I thought it would be helpful to reaffirm and show the public specifically our responsibilities as trustees, which are located in your board packet. It comes from the State of Michigan Library Board Trustee Manual, which I have my copy and we all have a copy of this. I'm not going to read it because, you don't, I don't need to do that, but what I wanted to emphasize was our permeating responsibility that we do have, which is emphasized throughout this manual, to advocate for our library and its ability to provide information and services with access to all citizens. As committees soon, and then our Board Meeting next month, we'll be meeting to look at the collections policy as well as other things that help guide the barrier-free access to our library, and I just wanted all of us to keep that in mind. It's a true privilege to represent the Novi community in these seats because even though we're appointed to aid in policy and budget and other things, we represent the citizens' right in Michigan to access libraries and information and all the services contained within. It's not our duty to judge the morality of information because all of us come from different perspectives and backgrounds that feed into how we navigate this world, but the common importance is our duty to uphold our oaths to the Michigan Constitution as well as the Constitution of the United States. And when it comes to libraries and information, it is very clear as trustees how we should be navigating. And also, what I would like to add is, and you'll see this in the Director's Report, some of us had the pleasure of being able to attend a really special gala last week with the staff, and it was very meaningful because it was held by the Michigan Association of Media and Education. Some of the media specialists from the Novi Community School District had nominated the library for an award, and so we were all there with staff to receive the Community Collaborator Award. And I think that when you think about all the awards that anyone could get, I feel like that that one is so important and is truly representative of the synergy that we've built between the school district, between other city administrations, between other organizations in our community, and the library. And it's really representative of leadership and staff, and also, you know, us as advocates of the library as your trustees. And it's really profound. Our community is very lucky to have this. And it's only going to get better from here. You kind of heard a preview, but that's not really, I'm not going to address that. There are some cool things in the works in terms of the synergy between the schools and us too. So that's all I'm going to say. Thank you for obliging me for that. And now we're going to move on to the Treasures Report. Trustee Chair Curry.
Oh, did you want to? Oh, sorry. Yes, you can comment. I'll open up the floor to comments. Trustee Mitchner. Well, I think what you just shared, let me move this closer. I think what you just shared was really profound, and I don't want to just skip past it and go to money. But no, I, I love that. I love that you took the time out to write about being congenial, but also being focused on what our job is and understanding our role. And sometimes we agree and sometimes we don't, but we can do that in a way that is leadership-based as opposed to anything else. So I just appreciate that, that call-out and reminding us what we're supposed to be doing, but also congratulating us on trying to get there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any, anything to say before we move on? We're good? Okay. Trustee Chair Curry, you have the floor for the Treasures Report.
It's a little more, if you read this, little interesting, interesting times we live in, oddly enough, you'll see in both our 268 Fund and our 269 Fund, our revenues year-to-date have actually gone down. That's actually entirely related to the mark-to-market rules regarding our, the bonds that we hold. It's not going to be a real loss, but it's a loss you have to show on paper. That's about it, nothing more entertaining than that.
Could you maybe explain a little bit? Could you maybe explain a little bit more of what that means?
So, yeah, because we have two, we have fairly large surpluses in both of our funds. And we are only allowed to invest those things, I believe, in US securities or US treasuries. Yeah, very specific things. But basically with the weird interest rate environment, when rates go up, the current bonds are at an old rate, so their capital value drive goes down. We tend to hold, based on our conversations with the city CFO last year, we tend to hold those things to maturity. So, unless we had a liquidation event, we wouldn't actually recognize that loss.
So, your interest, your interest on investments is where he's.
Yeah, that's where you're seeing the loss.
Specific to information that there's loss.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for trustee Sherkuri? Seeing none, we'll move on to the director's report.
Well, thanks. At the very top on page 38, I want to recognize two staff members that will be celebrating years of service in December. Emily Brush from our Information Services Department. Emily is our Early Literacy Specialist Librarian and has been with us seven years. And then Shannon O'Leary, Information Services Department. She is our International Language Librarian and she has also been with us seven years. So, thank you to both of them. They both contribute amazing programming, amazing connections with our youth in the community, collection development. Both are excited about the opportunities that they have and the connections that they're making. So, both of them are faces that are out in the community on a regular basis and I truly appreciate them. At the bottom, I wanted to share with you my little note that I had actually put out to the staff. Last Saturday was my 15th year anniversary. And I got to work, which I loved. You know, I actually like being at work on my anniversary because then I get to usually send something out or thank the staff that I work with. And that's what I did. But I pared it down a little bit just so that you could see it. But I did share this specifically with the staff to let them know how much I appreciate them and how much I enjoy the profession that we're in and the work that we're doing. I did, for you trustee Dooley, I did make sure that there was a photo at the bottom because of our great award that we received. I want to thank you for attending with me last week Thursday. It was just fabulous to be in a roomful of librarians. They were special, they were media specialist librarians. They are librarians and it was just a great room and it was a lot of warmth and love for what we're doing and continuing to make connections with community members and students. That's what we're, that's what we're here to do. And move along information, which is absolutely fabulous. So, I felt so good leaving that event last Thursday and I hope you did too and thank you for joining me. Moving on, we, in fact, this is a good segue just to a question that you had trustees during. When it comes to numbers, we've been tracking and putting in just so you can see where, you know, we're trending by day and how the building is used. This is just physical people coming into the building. This isn't the drive-up numbers. We do collect those as well, but I just want to, you know, for you to see that they are going up and we have had significant days where we're getting to those thousand and over a thousand visitors, which is, it's wonderful. I would love to get back to that 1,500 a day that we were, that we were seeing. And I believe we will. We've not had a full year of programming yet. As Dana shared, you know, last April was when we got them building back open and started doing the programming. So, we continue to build back book discussions that have, you know, that just started again this fall, connecting with our senior community, going out with them also and doing things off-site, but we count those numbers. But this will be, this is our big year to get back. So, very excited about that. And then, starting on page 40, you have the November e-newsletter, which is always robust with tons of information. I'm sorry that I never can put in the next month because it's not ready yet. But I know that Dana tries to get you information to be aware of what's coming up for future programming and she'll continue to do that. Want to make a note for page 47 because I have invited Barbara Kowski, our head of IT, to join us in December. She is retiring from NPL after 25 years. So, we will take a few minutes to recognize her in December. I did invite Barbara Cook to come back because, you know, she has left us. Wanted this board to say goodbye to her as well, but she has unfortunately declined because of some family conflicts, personal, that's going on. But we had a going away for her and said goodbye. And she has, she spent a ton of time, which I truly appreciate. She gave a ton of her time to training our new person, Bindiya Suriyan Naninen. And she is now our bookkeeper at the library and she's working with us for 24 hours a week. And she's doing a fantastic job. It is a huge job. Lots of details and money and financial reports. And she is doing fantastic. I will make sure that you meet her as well, but I'm keeping her close to my vest right now because we're getting into budget time and we're getting into mid-year. And there's some reports and things that she's trying to get a really good handle on before I kind of put her on her own. So, I promise I will bring her and introduce you all to her because she's fantastic. Moving along, there are just, I'll be happy to entertain any questions on the reports that are in here. We did have four members of our staff attend the Michigan Library Association Conference in Port Huron this year. And I asked and they provided wonderful summaries of their conference day. All of the conference attendees from our library this year were new to MLay and new to the conference, which was wonderful because it's always great when you can get feedback from someone who's new and attending for the first time. So, enjoy reading that because I know that they have shared some great ideas that hopefully we will be able to capture and bring forth at NPL in the future. And then, we have our statistics, which follow through to about page 70. Our friends had a meeting in November, which you will see the agenda, and then their minutes from October. Happy to entertain any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yes, trustee Sturig.
You know, I noticed in our summary, we're talking about the Lake Shore Lending Libraries. Oh, you're right. I know in the past, we had a couple glitches with that. And I know that you were talking to the vendor. Has that been ironed out or is that still an ongoing issue?
It has gotten better. We just recently had a screen that had an issue. So, we are working with them. And there's still a conversation about us getting back some funds based on some of the equipment that has not been 100% since we installed. So, yes, conversations have gotten better and the response in terms of the technology being worked on and the improvements in terms of problems that we had in the past are no longer occurring. Thank you.
Yes, trustee Sherkuri.
Yeah, I believe last year in the budget, we had put some consideration for some architectural services related to the fact that the entrance is kind of poorly designed from a climate standpoint.
Yes.
So, now we're entering the part of the season that it matters. Just curious where we are as far as finding a architect and stuff like that.
I haven't had a chance to move forward on that yet, trustee Sherkuri. With our head of IT leaving, that's kind of been my focus is IT, interviews and things like that and our staffing. So, it is on my to-do list. But you're correct. We are coming into the weather and I'm hoping to engage soon.
Yeah, I just want them to start like in, you know, in May when everything's fine.
Right.
Julie, I was wondering how the 10-minute parking is going.
Well, I haven't had any complaints.
Okay.
I think that's great, right? And, which I didn't, I didn't think we would get. I think that's a positive, putting it in. It does give us a way to direct probably our largest traffic time and pick up of family members, parents, and engaging them to sit in a 10-minute parking spot waiting for a child if they're picking up students after school. So, that's been a good communication tool for us. Also, we just started our new guest services monitor, guest relations monitor. Used to be our building monitor was the title before, but we changed it up knowing that it's more interaction and building of customer service and meeting with people walking in the building. And she started this week, so we're excited to have her because that'll be a point person in our building for when we need those types of things. We need attention drawn to them and we need some action. So, we're excited. Thank you for the question.
Anyone else? Good? Okay. We'll move on to the second public comment then. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome. Thank you.
In order to hear all citizen comments in a reasonable hour, the library board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session, however, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the library board. And citizens must state their first, last name and address. Does anyone like to come forward for public comment? Okay, seeing none. Do any of the trustees have any updates with regards to their committee reports? Yes, trustee Bartlett.
Okay, the, this is a report from the meeting with Rethinking Libraries. I have to apologize for my fellow members for the strategic planning group. There wasn't time to get a meeting in because we met with Rethinking Libraries at 1:00 PM this afternoon. I just wanted to give everybody an update of what was discussed in that meeting and where we are as far as status goes. There's some data issue right now with the data that we were able to get to them. It wasn't enough granular data as far as what type of materials are checked out, fiction, nonfiction, a number of other issues. Julie is working with the staff and going to set up a meeting with Rethinking Libraries to see what they can do and what we can do because our checkout staff is a third party and seeing what we can do. Primarily, we worked on solidifying the calendar. Essentially, the sessions are going, the Rethinking Libraries will be traveling here sometime on March 7th for meetings in the afternoon. Or February, excuse me, February 7th and February 8th and February 9th. For three days, they'll be starting in the afternoon in February. Our session is scheduled 11:30 to 1:30 on the 9th, which will be their last session before leaving. I think all members have said that they can work in except for trustee Sturig. And they indicated that trustee Sturig could possibly sit into one of the group meetings that are going to be held virtually or have a personal meeting virtually. They said that they wouldn't, you know, he could, you know, act as a regular citizen in that area and not affect, you know, their data gathering. So, he will have an opportunity to get, to work with the folks. We're looking to market these, the sessions and get the collection of the folks who are going to be attending the sessions after the holidays, you know, as far as recruiting folks and so forth. There will be evening meetings available to community members who have work schedules so that they can meet in the evenings of the 7th and 8th of February. The, we're also going to be reaching out to schools for sessions. Some may be in school, some may be utilizing the teen space and the after-school sessions there. On March 21st and 22nd, that is set for the retreat. The preliminary times are 4:00 to 8:00 PM on the 21st and then 9:00 to 12:00 PM on the, on March 22nd. They usually do a seven-to-eight hour session there. They're actively developing the survey. The survey first cut is going to be available to the library staff shortly. Our plan right now is to make them available to the board in our next meeting on the 21st and hopefully putting that out to the website so that we can run it through some paces, basically test to be sure everything is good before actively advertising it to the public. I mean, if a public, person from the public wants to fill out the survey, they're more than welcome to, but we're not going to be actively pushing it until after January 3rd. We've also requested an elementary survey, which is targeted towards young patrons, targeted primarily for second to fifth grade. Director Farkas is going to contact the various elementary schools and the fifth and sixth grade house. These are targeted essentially for a young person to look at. We are not, there's nothing, there's nothing really, you know, any dangerous politically or anything. This is just, you know, how the student deals with the library. So, we're going to try to get them administered in the schools. They did say when they sent them home, they had to kind of weed out what was filled out by parents and what was filled out by children. Because we are really looking, you know, if the parent wants to contribute, we'll have a website, we'll have all kinds of means for them to use the survey for everyone. That's basically what we discussed. Next core meeting is December 13th. So, we should have, this will be attached to the notes or the minutes for the packet for next week. Hopefully, we'll have something in the packet actually for a core meeting because it's the 21st is our next meeting. Thank you.
Just to add real quick to trustee Bartlett, I did speak with Dana Protanek, who is our communications manager, and her goal is to actually have survey information, be able to let you view and see the information at the December meeting. Yep.
One second. Trustee Michener, raise your hand first. Go ahead, trustee Michener.
Sure. I was just going to say for the Bylaw Committee, which is ad hoc, we had, I canceled the November 15th meeting. We are rescheduled. And I just wanted to throw out a note because I recognize that I share with DEI Committee, but I don't think I shared with like an email to the Bylaw Committee, but I'll just say it here, so I don't have to keep saying it. I do have, my father is in a precarious situation with his life right now. So, there are times where I might be available and times where I won't. So, please forgive me if there are cancellations every now and then. He's on respirator, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, trustee Sherkuri.
I just had a question. Just continue finding. Just one suggestion, if you're worried about parental data, like skewing the kids thing, is maybe you have like two copies of the exact same survey, a parent's copy and a kid's copy.
Well, the, the actual survey that's sent to the public is meant to be the parent's copy. Because, I mean, that's going to have, that's going to have, you know, all kinds of information as far as accessibility, things that you wouldn't ask a second or, you know, third grader. You know, there are going to be more of the contents of what books do you enjoy? What programs do you enjoy? You know, it's going to be more focused on what the child enjoys. But the parent's copy is meant to be that encompassing public survey.
So, one. Yeah. One particular survey is for parent and one for the elementary. Are we also thinking one for teens? Remind me again.
We are. We're going to be working specifically with our teen population.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you'll get a lot from them too.
Yes, we do. I think they're actually using the adult version, but they're going, we're going to be planning for focus groups and also an opportunity, we hope to be on site at the high school where they help with some choosing of core ideas about the library during their lunch hour that they can weigh in on. So, we're trying to get that whole 2,000-plus students in one day during a lunch hour where we can get feedback. Yes, those are ideas that came from Rethinking Libraries. So, this is fantastic. The most ideas I've been experienced with when it comes to getting data from many groups that we're trying to get information from. Yeah.
Thank you.
And the data, the data hangup right now, that's not going to impact our timeline, right? We're okay?
No. The data issue that we're having is Carl. We've got to figure out how we might be able to dive a little deeper into our own collection data. Has nothing to do with anything reaching out to people to get survey information at all. Absolutely.
As we discussed a bit last meeting, you know, this meeting, this data from the focus groups is all going to go to Rethinking Libraries. And they're going to be consolidating it and getting us, you know, viewpoints from various groups. So, a lot of this is going to be hidden from us, you know, as far as exactly which group did what. And that's the purpose of the whole thing.
Thank you.
Yes, we'll also be able to use information from the Novi Citizen Survey that's going out, that went out actually, I think, this fall. So, that data will be available and we're going to be working with the GIS department here at the city in order to dive into some data specific to cardholders.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, real quick, for Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, we are meeting after Thanksgiving. So, we're meeting on November 28th. We're going to be going over the collections policies. We can try to get that ready to bring forth for December. I just want to let my fellow trustees know on that committee that I will be sending out dates ASAP just because we're going to have another shortened month just in case we might need a second meeting. And trustee Sturig, if you have a chance, I don't know how you feel about this, but do you want DEI to work on policy first and then your committee reviews? this, but do you want D E I to work on policy first and then your committee reviews, or would you like to do it in tandem to save time, just because we're short on time?
I, I guess initially I was thinking we would look at it after the D E I did it.
Okay.
I mean, that was my first thought. I, I'm not opposed though, trying to work in tandem to speed it along, um, if, if you think that will help to do it together.
Maybe, just because like, um, if, if you can at least get a date on the books, we might be ready for you.
Okay.
Um, I wanna make sure we are, so that's what we'll try to do. Okay.
Okay, see-
Okay. Um, cause I know this month we ran out of time because of the holiday, so, okay. All right, thank you. All right. And now, we're moving to matters for library, library board action, the fun stuff. So, um, the first item is a recommendation from the H R Board Committee to amend the Novi Public Library Communication Device Usage Policy and rename to Usage of Library-Issued Technology. Those are located on pages 77 through 80. May I have a motion?
To open up the discussion, I'll, I'll, I'll move to approve the policy that's presented in our court.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Okay, trustee Sherkuri, a second, and now we can open the floor for discussion. Trustee Stirrig, do you wanna start?
Yeah, um, uh, you know, this, this isn't exactly my expertise, but we're using the term technology and away from devices. What, I, I, could someone describe what technology we're talking about? Are we talking phones?
Yes.
Are we talking computers?
Yes.
But, but it's, it's like an undefined term and it, it seems like such a general term, but if you could explain what-
We went to general.
I would, I would think of what devices-
Yeah.
Is included in the term technology.
So, it's anything that's a, a piece of technology that would be issued by the library, which are cellphones. We have, um, eight staff that have cellphones that are issued for management purpose, facilities purposes, and our guest relations monitor and I T. So, those are cellphones that staff members have. So, this is an H R policy specific for someone who would be, um, issued a piece of technology from the library. They're using library-owned, well, I don't wanna say that. It's not necessarily owned by the library. It might be something that we might be using versus, we might be leasing.
Mm-huh.
So, that's why we changed it to issued instead of owned, that's what we had in the past. Um, but it could be a laptop, it could be, um, it could be a phone, it could be a, um, iPad, it could be, um, it could be, um, cables, um, in order to have, you know, pieces of equipment working at home. So, it's for work purposes, that's what it's typically for, but I wanted it to be more general to cover all the different things that we might be lending out to staff members. Yep.
Trustee Michener?
Yes. That was a good question. Um, I'm, thank you. So, I was curious about, um, your descriptions were really good, but it made my brain think about email. Would that, cause they have a, a, not-
It's not email. This is specifically technology, meaning, yes, equipment.
So, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so not like their social media usage or anything like that, so, okay, thank you.
We have different policies specific to those things that we will-
Perfect.
We will need to be addressing and, and we'll be reviewing. There's nothing to change right now-
Yes.
But we have specifics for those.
Okay. I appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Are we ready to vote?
So, there's, there's a separate policy, cause, I mean, one thing, I'm going through this, I did notice it was all focused on the device itself rather than, because you get into a whole nother-
The behavior, yes.
You know, based on access to network-
Yes.
Cause, I mean, that, that's, and that's getting wider and wider.
Those are the next two policies that are being reviewed and probably, I hope, coming to you in December.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I mean, everything that's in place now still covers it, but we're reviewing them, but we have new people on staff and I wanna get at least the fact that these devices are in their hands covered and we have that, that H R policy covered for them as well as, uh, for the organization.
See, I, I'm less concerned about what we issue-
Mm-hmm.
Rather than what comes into the building.
Yeah, absolutely. Which we have great firewalls and stuff for though. Yes. But no, I appreciate the question.
Okay.
All good questions.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right, let's do the roll call vote, please.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Sherkuri?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Guramurti?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the second is a recommendation from the H R Board Committee to amend the vacation policy, and those can be found on 81 through 84. May I get a motion? Great, trustee Sherkuri, do I have a second? Trustee Bartlett seconds, and now the floor is open for discussion. Trustee Sherkuri, would you like to start?
Sure. Um, I guess, what's the raison d'etre for this? What are we looking at here?
So, if you look at the bottom of page 81, what we wanna do, what we found, is that we, we were able to offer opportunities for advancement with employees currently in our organization. And they were at a part-time status earning vacation time. But in the policy that we had previous, you would have started over as a full-time employee, you would have started over with your vacation time and having to earn again. We wanna make sure that we are recognizing the time that they might already have earned as a part-time person, which could be a lot, especially if someone's worked a number of years with us, but then they're going to a full-time position. We wouldn't want them to be losing the time that they've earned. So, we-
Yep.
So, just to clarify, is that accrued vacation hours or-
It is. No, it's accrued vacation hours, based though on years of service. If you look at, um, i- in the middle of the, of the policy on page 81, so-
So, if somebody works for us, uh, just hypothetically, four years, a part-timer and switches to, gets, I would do a full-time role in their fifth year.
They probably wouldn't have, they, they'd actually be better, they'd be bettering themselves by moving into the full-time position. That doesn't actually affect them as much as someone who could be 10 years into the organization and accruing that vacation time as a part-time employee and then moving into full-time. They might be making less when they go to full-time status. We wouldn't wanna do that to someone.
Right.
Yep. And this is the first time we've had it. I'm very excited. This is a good thing, bringing this to you, you know, to know that we have people that have stayed around in our organization and, and if qualified, you know, have the opportunity to move up, we wouldn't wanna then have them, uh, not be recognized for their year, for their, for their time and have them get less.
Mm-hmm. Yes, trustee Michener?
Uh, thank you. To add to the discussion, I, I think this is definitely a good thing from what I can read and what you've shared. Um, we've talked a lot at this table about, um, how can we be competitive when there's so many other opportunities for people out there in other jobs, right? So, I think this is a way to show appreciation and raise morale and also showcase that our board is thinking about them.
Yep. And then on page 82, the other highlighted area in yellow, which is H, um, if you can see the language, it was only for fourth and fifth week. We, we wanna be able to offer, I, I think it's a good thing to be able to offer someone an opportunity if they want to, to be paid out for a week of vacation if they're not going to use it. You know, circumstances might come up and they might not be able to go on vacation, but they've earned the time. And, so I'd, I'd also like to be giving that to staff as well. I've been budgeting that anyways in terms of, um, people turning in for that for payment, so, um, just, just wanted to solidify it in language.
Thank you.
And how does that, um, work with, how does H work with I, I guess?
Um, people can also carry over as well. So, you have a, you have a choice. If you want to pay out, you might not be carrying over as much, but you do have the opportunity to carry over some time too. Maybe you're planning for an event the following year or a vacation that you've put off, you might carry over that time to use it for the following year.
Yeah. So, I guess, so, as far as employees' time, would that better budget based on September 15th, right? That's the last day to-
And you, that's only two months left of the year. They pretty much know at that point whether they're going to be, right, using it or, or moving it forward.
Mm-hmm.
And we offer both opportunities.
Ken? Anybody else have any comments or questions? Trustee Bartlett, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Sherkuri?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Guramurti?
Yes.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next one is recommendation from Building and Grounds Board Committee to offer a, uh, $0.00 lease for the 22, 23, um, ye- part of the year, so December 1st, 2022 to November 2023, and then annually reevaluate based on annual reports submitted, um, by the cafe, is that correct? In July of each calendar year to look at P and L, profit and loss. You can find that on page 87. Uh, would someone like to make the motion? Trustee Stirring?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Trustee Guramurti seconds, and now we can have discussion. Would anyone from Building and Grounds like to start us off? Or trustee Stirrig, would you like to start us off?
Um, yes, um, well, I can go back a few years, uh, in terms of just history of cafes, not only in Novi Library, but in other libraries. They're very difficult to sustain.
Yeah.
Uh, when we built the building, we wanted to have, have a cafe, but we recognized that, um, you know, a lot, a lot of the cafes aren't making it in libraries. So, we obviously would like to have it generate income, if it can generate income, um, due to COVID, operational issues, um, the cafe is having an economically difficult time. Um, it is my preference and I, and I hope, hope the other trustees, that we continue to have a cafe here even if they don't pay rent for the space. So, I strongly support the motion to, uh, uh, at least this year not charge rent and evaluate things based on their revenue and other things, but at least this year not charge them rent because they were losing money last year.
Okay, thank you. Yes, trustee Michener? Oh, will someone over here first?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Michener, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for letting me go. Um, yeah, I, I, I would tend to, I was, I pointed at you because you're the only one that's up here that remembers our prior cafe situation where it was challenging and you were the president then and had to make some decisions. It's not easy being the president, right?
Never is.
President too. Um, but, um, in regards to the cafe, I would agree. I think that it's, it's tricky having space in a space. Um, and I think that we all have very high hopes for, um, for any cafe that comes in, but they also have high hopes too. Um, and they don't always get met, is what we're finding. I know that the word in the street is that they, people love that there's a Starbucks in here specifically, that's not what we had before. The, the food is quality, the service is quality, um, there's, there's all kinds of really great things that, you know, many of you already know about, and if you don't know about, take advantage of it because it's fantastic. Um, even on, um, Election Day, they offer like a little fuel your vote discount and it's, it's really good service, I'll just mention that. I'm curious, cause I know that we've done different things for them before, so I'm curious, um, have you received any feedback from them in regards to like how it's helped or like, what kind of conversations are they having with you? Are there things that we as a library board can do better to make sure that they get more revenue? Um, or is there, are there ways that our patrons can support more? I'm just curious about that piece, cause I, I don't want them to go away.
Right.
Um, but I wanna make sure that I'm not just approving things, but I'm asking good questions so that we can go beyond just giving free space, which is okay-
Right.
And I'm intending to vote yes. Um, but, you know, I wanna know what we can do that goes further. It's like, instead of like, what, what do they say? Giving a fish dinner or like teaching someone how to fish?
Sure. Well, I think, to be quite honest, I think this is, they opened in the fall of 2019.
Yes.
And then, so not even six months and COVID hit.
Right.
So, they have, and, and as trustee Stirring has said, they have not had a moment to see revenue and to see an actual cafe, um, experience because of COVID. So, the, which is why the contract is for December to November. I actually want to see a full year-
Okay.
Where they're going to, I hope, have steady operations and nothing affect them. So, that's one.
Okay.
Two, Kim and her team, and Kim is the manager, she is open to all kinds of ideas. In fact, um, we're trying more often to offer, um, when there's rentals, that there's a catering option, which is very helpful. One of the things she struggled with this summer coming into the fall was actually staffing, just like the library did. So, that was a really big hindrance. She's now back to full staff. She actually is two really great employees, um, that, that is, she's, that she has just brought on, so training and everything, but that's part of it. So, she is very willing to be out of the box in terms of thinking about what we wanna do more, um, to bring them, uh, you know, into light and, and for people to get to know them and where they are and what they do. Um, but I think those struggles are first, what, what we're handling is just staffing and things and training to get started and then they're open to. They have not extended their hours yet, they tried the morning. Now with the school moving to the later time start, um, it, it, they found it very difficult that students aren't actually coming into the building ahead of time and, and getting coffee or something to drink. It doesn't seem to work. Their bread and butter, and it's, and we know it, is after school at 2:45 till about 5:00 o'clock. So, they are doing wonderful at the time, they don't ever wanna change that timeframe. What I do think they might look at once their staffing gets well, um, put together and training has been done, is maybe staying open a little later in the evening to hit our programming, which we're just starting to bring back-
Right.
That evening programming really, really well again. So, I'd like to see that all happening. And then, um, we're planning, here's an out of, out of the box idea that's coming. Um, we're going to be offering on a Sunday in January, um, where we're going to be open, I was hoping our students were still gonna be here. Um, on Sunday night, January 22nd, we are going to offer, um, end of semester studying for a high school from 6:00 to 10:00 at night. So, not that I wanna have late hours all the time, please.
Yeah.
But, but we do, we do know that our kids want us and need us, and so a couple times a year where it might be beneficial to them, so she's wanting to be open.
Yeah.
You know, so she's very willing to go with us and take the lead on like voting day and things like that, when we can see that there's a bang for her buck and, and an opportunity. So, I think we need to give them this year to kinda get back into a groove and see how, how their sales and how things are doing, which is why I, I asked for, uh, the committee, you know, to, to just think of the one year of giving them that reprieve and then we can go from there. We'll be able to see some really good numbers from them by the end of, um, June and July to make better decisions for the next contract. So, I, I think we wanna be open and amenable to them getting back on their feet.
Yeah, and I know that Kim is new, cause we had Eve-
She is, she's new, as of this summer as well.
So, that's also a, a thing to consider as we're thinking about what we wanna say here as far as yes or no, um, just because she's also newer in this role and trying to navigate what's already been going on, right?
But she's very, um, supportive. I know that she wants to see things work in a positive way for the library, those are words from her.
Yeah.
Um, but you can see the numbers, I also don't want them to have a loss. And if they have a loss over a number of few years, they're not gonna wanna stay around. I mean, who would, right? I mean, any business doesn't want to have a loss.
Right.
So, we'll, we'll have to, you know, let's see how this is going and, and see what we can offer then by them, but-
Yeah, no, that sounds good, I, um-
I appreciate the question. I do, because...
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't think they've had a fair moment yet.
I, I hear you, and I've, I've been here for all of that, and I also know what it looks like. I, I'm lucky enough to have been here when we had a different system, and this system, and this one's much better.
It is, 100%.
Yeah, so I, I have that experience. I don't want this to change. So, right? He does too. Okay. Thank you, that's all I needed.
You're absolutely welcome. Thank you for asking.
Yep.
Thank you. Trustee Garamurti, go ahead.
So I just wanted to second what Julie said. So I'm totally for this because I have a, as a high schooler's mom, I can just say, okay, you know, afternoon, go to the library and you're fed, while I'm like somewhere else. So whatever, I'm, I'm like so, so such a fan of this. So if we can extend the hours, awesome. I did notice that labor is their highest expense. So is there an opportunity to open up for volunteers and stuff and...
They can't under the contracts they have currently with their food service. So they have to be very careful with, with their, with employees. We do have, and we've had in the past, transition students helping.
Yeah.
But they're not doing like the serve type work that you will need to have an actual employee for.
Okay.
And that's based on liability and things like that too.
Sure.
So, yep.
Thanks.
That's a good question. Trustee Sherkuri, trustee Bartlett, anything?
The other thing to add when it comes to employment is the change that we saw over the last year of wages going up, and then how that affects when you're hiring someone, if they have to increase their wages, like we've, we're having to do too.
Right.
That just becomes bigger versus what they're selling.
Right.
So, you know, we saw that increase, and, and, and we're seeing that across the board when it comes to restaurants and the food service industry.
It's just a break even is not happening with the selling point.
Right. At least minus 6,000, and if they do better, we might see that, we might see the era go this way, right?
Yes.
Yes, at least to see.
I also am in support of this, just because I personally worked with the food service director outside of our library for Rotary, and I know that she's very community-focused. She's very driven, and she's very passionate about getting people fed, which was very awesome. And our cafe really isn't dispensable, and it does run really professionally. I'm hoping that with the increase in our meeting room rentals, that people do consider them for catering because they are very reasonable, I will tell you. And then also, the food is, is really good, so. I'm hoping that helps them with their profit as well. So if there's no more comments, trustee Bartlett, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Cher Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Garamurti?
Yes.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Trustee Sturig?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Motion passes six zero.
Great. Thank you, everybody. All right, so, last item, library director recommends working with Allied Building Service Co. based on information provided above with a not to exceed of $54,215, includes three-year maintenance plan, understanding there may be an opportunity for reducing costs with different equipment recommendation based on the long lead time. It's a really long motion. That's on page 88 in terms of the information, yes.
So I do have an update for you, and actually, what I'd like to do is actually pull this from Board for Matter Action.
Oh, you do?
I do, and here's why. We've been able to continue discussions with vendors that we're working on trying to get better pricing, and I actually have a couple meetings set up that came after the board packet was put together, where we can look at maybe even some better pricing from the current vendors that we've been engaged with. So I'd like to just hold it, and I will, I, it would be my hope that I'd be bringing something back in December for you.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Yeah, if everybody's, oh, go ahead, trustee Garamurti.
Yes.
Is this just for the AC unit or something else in the data?
This is the AC unit that's specific to our IT, to our server room.
Okay.
For IT. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And we started it as a bid process. We did not have a very, we did not have a successful bid process. So then we went to quotations and solicited a number of quotations. We did get a couple back, but we're, we're finding that even trustee Sturig and trustee Cher Curry and myself, we're uncomfortable still with pricing. We think we can do better.
Okay.
We've heard we can do better based on more conversations that we've had. So I'd like to just keep, keep one more month, and hopefully have some better information for all of you.
I'm pretty sure everyone's meetable to that, so I think it'll be...
Right. Just, just so you know what's driving some of this, the lead times are 40 weeks, and there might be some alternatives with not having those lead times, plus also some savings as well, in terms of equipment.
Savings is great.
Yes. That was, and that was from multiple vendors that said the 40-week lead time. So we know that that's just an industry standard that's going on right now with shortages.
Okay, so we'll just pull item four.
Yes, thank you.
Sure, no problem. Yes, trustee Michener?
I just had a quick, thank you. I just had a quick question in regards to your review, Julie. I don't see anything about, don't we usually do a December, like we get some paperwork? I don't see anything in here about that, and I don't want to...
Yep.
I, I always feel pressure, like hurry up and get this done. And I'm like, I feel pressured, but I don't see anything.
It'll be, it'll be for December, so you'll be getting the info.
Okay, so it's forthcoming, and then we'll have a closed session in...
December. You can do it in December, or we can do it in January, whichever you prefer. In fact, I'll touch base with trustee Crawford.
Yes.
And see what she, what she wants to do.
I'm thinking about you.
Okay, thank you.
I know, it is about that time.
I forgot.
It's about that time.
I know. We've got other things that we're worried about, but no, absolutely. I will make sure that we have that on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then I think in the future, although this is totally cool for us to take it off the table now, but if you ever want to pull a Matters for Board Action, we can do that when we amend, I think.
Yep.
The agenda in the future. Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, perfect. All right. We have no communications, no closed session. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Trustee Michener? Second from trustee Garamurti, may I have the roll called, please, trustee Bartlett?
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Garamurti?
Yes.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Trustee Sturig?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Cher Curry?
What if you said no? It still passes. All right, thank you, everybody.